Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners' Court, Thursday, the 12th day of November 2009. It is a little after 3:00 PM as we do all meetings. We will stand for an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. I don't see anybody...
Martha's here.
...or normal guy. If I'd like this, everybody please rise and just take a moment of silence and reflect and pray for the families of the 13 people that lost their lives at Fort Hood. Thank you. Let me ask Joe Vega to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Joe. And he needs to go, so I'm gonna take one item out of order. If there's no objection from the court, I would like to take one item out of order because he needs to scoot. And this is item 4B. Brady, I'm gonna take you out of order because I know you need to go. Presentation of a resolution honoring Mr. James Brady Parker for his many years of service in law enforcement. Do I hear motion to acknowledge before I present?
So moved.
By Commissioner Gonsal, signed by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries? Brady?
Yes.
Why don't we do it up here and then I'll read the resolution.
This basically was somewhat of a shock when the judge told me about this. After so many years, it's been a family tradition, I guess, that's carried on for me, anyway, the past 25, 26 years. Now, my son has carried on the tradition. He was with the Highway Patrol for about four to five years. He's now with the U.S. Border Patrol. My father, as most of y'all have known through the years, was with the county, I think, a total of 38 years, 44 total, in law enforcement. So, law enforcement in general in our family is a very important issue. And for this honor here for me, it means a lot and for my family. And to each and every one of you who made this presentation possible, thank you so very much from my wife, from me, my family, from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Sure.
I told him we're gonna be about 3:30, but I said, "No, he needed to scoot."
What's new, Dan?
Why don't you tell us a joke, too?
Can I do a joke? No, he's a long one.
Hey, man, he's good. He's doing fine.
Javier's coming to the podium to say a joke.
I didn't mean to cut your visit short, but come on. Why don't you come up as well and share this with Brady? You missed his good speech. I'll read, I'm not gonna read all of it because it's somewhat lengthy, but this is a consideration and option of resolution honoring Mr. James Brady Parker for his many years of service in law enforcement. Mr. James Brady Parker, born on June 6, 1952. You're older than me, but not by much, like two months. Married to Ida M. Parker for more than 30 years, is a resident of Harlingen, Texas, of Cameron County, and has worked as a civil servant in law enforcement for almost half of his life. Mr. Parker has served the public in law enforcement for over 25 years with various jurisdictions which would not have been done without the unwavering support of his wife, Ida. And whereas Mr. Parker served four years as a criminal investigator for McAllen PD, seven years as a senior investigator with the National Auto Theft Bureau, four years as a criminal investigator with the Doggo County DA's office, four years as a criminal investigator with the Cameron County DA's office, and where he took over the position that his father, James Jim W. Parker, had held for 38 years up until retiring, and six years as chief of police for the city of Combs. Mr. Parker served as a member of the original South Texas Auto Theft Task Force, as well as the High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Task Force, commonly known as HIDA, through which Mr. Parker worked in a multi-agency coordination setting involving federal, state, and local partners, resulting in numerous arrests, narcotic seizures, currency seizures, and vehicle repatriations. Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Cameron County Commissioners' Court wishes to honor Mr. James Brady Parker for his outstanding dedication and achievements in the law enforcement community. Signed, the 20th day of August, by Sofia Benavides, Precinct 1, John Wood, Precinct 2, David Gonsal, Precinct 3, Edna Tamayo, Precinct 4. Thank you for your public service, Brady.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you very much. Thank you. In parting, I would like to say one more time, all of you, thank you very much. Hopefully, this is not the end of Brady, but the beginning of something new on down the road. And without your support, this wouldn't have been possible. So, thank you very much, and y'all have a very good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo?
Second.
Signed by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? To discuss the following four items. Deliberation concerning possible lease of county-owned property on East Harrison and East Tyler Streets in Harlingen, Texas, and Bean Lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, Block 76, original townsite of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of drainage access easements in El Ranchito, Precinct 4 area pursuant to same code section. Item C, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel regarding contract issues with Costa Rica Food &amp; Spirits, Inc., and Alguico Properties LLC for Costa Rica Food &amp; Spirits concession in Andy Bowie Park pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item D, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning Linda Martinez versus Cameron County, Cameron County Juvenile Probation and Texas Juvenile Probation Commission in the U.S. District Court, Southern District of Texas Civil Action, Number 09CV205, for discussion of possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and B. We have two items as a supplemental. Hold on. One more. I'm sorry. Item E, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel for legal advice on negotiations and contract issues with South Padre and Water Park Limited for a 6.730 acre in Isla Blanca Park pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Two items from the special agenda. Conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning civil service appeal, Number 0903610560, Yocabel Moreno versus Cameron County for possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.071A, B, and 2. Item B, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning civil service appeal, Number 0903415621, Rosendo Rodriguez versus Cameron County for possible settlement pursuant to same code section. We're in executive session. I've already done that. Do I hear motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gonsal, in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? Item A, deliberation concerning possible lease of county-owned property on East Harrison. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of Mr. Sepulveda and proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo. Second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gonsal, in favor. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of drainage access easements in El Ranchito. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of Mr. Sepulveda and to proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Wood.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? Item C, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel regarding contract issue with Costa Rica Food &amp; Spirits, Inc., and others. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel, Mr. Sepulveda, and proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, signed by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? Item D was not discussed. Do I hear motion to table?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? Item E was not discussed. Do I hear motion to table?
Move to table.
By Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? On the supplemental, item A, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning civil service appeal. Do I hear motion to...
Proceed along.
Proceed along the terms of the settlement agreement as recommended by our civil counsel.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, signed by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? Item B, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning civil service appeal of Rosendo Rodriguez. Do I hear motion to proceed along the terms of the settlement agreement?
So moved.
And recommended by our civil counsel. Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries? We go back to the regular, regular specials. Public comments? I have one public comment. Mr. Kent Martin, David Alvarez with Costa Rica Concession.
Judges, Commissioners, thank you for having us here today. And actually, we hope we got enough paperwork in such a short time that we had to y'all to see what we've been going through for the last two years. We've been working every angle we can to make this project work because of several factors that we had, including the hurricane, such as the Hyamlar still not even finished. And at that time, when the hurricane hit in 2008, the vegetation line got changed. So, when we turned in some drawings to the GLO in 2008, they had to determine a new vegetation line, which wasn't determined until this last time GLO was down here. And prior to that, now, 2007, of course, was when we got a permitting to start the demolition out there, which we started. But we've just been running into all kinds of breaks, so to speak, every time we get to... Every time we have a drawing built, I would send it to the GLO to see if we could get it approved down there, and they'd say, "No, either your building was too big or it was too far, too close to the beachfront." So, we've been working with them, but we've never gotten a confirmed drawing by the GLO with a line drawn across until after we had this meeting. And maybe finally, as far as the topograph and the drawing that we had from 2007, as compared to the one that we got in 2009, we actually got over 100 feet closer to the beach, which also gave us more room to do our parking that we needed. We were short in parking space to be able to do a project the size that we had discussed that we were gonna do. We have one dune, and we have a line of vegetation, and we'd need time to get Rick LaBouski to finish the drawing to fit it into that footprint that we have now to work with. And we wanna do that as soon as possible and start construction as soon as possible with y'all's approval. And we really do need some more time to finish this. Kent, what do you wanna say?
Yeah, I'll just say that the investor that we have is very interested. We've discussed business points, pretty much have an agreement on all our business points. But, you know, he couldn't make a final commitment until we actually had that GLO line, which we just got, to where he could see exactly what he could do with his footprint. Like David said, they're just, we need to get back with his architect, and I think we can have this going in a short period of time. But obviously, we're running short on our original deadline, and that's why we need an extension so we can go ahead and get this worked out.
And on the same token, the other investors that we have when we first started this project, of course, that was a really big project. Once we couldn't determine what we could put on there, they kinda shied away from it. So, we found some other investors that were willing to work with us. And they wanted really to see a big project out there on the examples that we gave you. And so, like I said, it's always been one thing or another, but we've been following up on this best of what we can do, working with the GLO and the architects and the investors. And we've got all those three items that we're trying to put together, and I think we already have it. And of course, like I said, you know, the hurricane also changed that line of vegetation and also put us a couple steps back.
And, you know, the economic, deterioration in economic environment, of course, is maybe even more difficult. But, like I said, we have an investor now that is ready to go forward if we just give some more time.
Thank you.
What kind of time are you thinking that you need before we could see a completed project out there?
Okay. Well, the project itself is gonna be about 150 to 165 rooms. From the start of construction to the completion of construction, it's gonna take about 12 months. We're trying to do it in a shorter time than that. We also need about, in order to get everything prepped up and get you all to approve the drawings, we need the drawings completed now that we have something to work with and get those to you all. And of course, we also have another... We also have to get back with the GLO to remove the sand dunes that are on the east side of the property, because that's gonna, they're on the footprint that we wanna use for the building. So, we talked to the GLO, and they said they'll give us the okay. Once we do the drawing, they'll give them the process, as we did on this last time.
So, again, what kind of timeline?
I wanna say 18 months.
For that, for the GLO issue?
From the beginning to the end, but I need to check with the GLO. Obviously, now that the GLO got together with me and Javier, and I came to the meeting when he was here with you all, it seems like now, you know, instead of bouncing back and forth from the county to the GLO and GLO, it seems like it can be done faster. I mean, it's taken six months or more sometimes just to get an approval for moving any vegetation or any sand dunes. And we're hoping that we can do that a lot faster.
So, 18 months?
I would think 18 months would be sufficient from start to finish, yes.
For a CO to be issued?
Yes.
Well, I think we can get a CO issued.
Before?
You're talking about completion.
Yeah.
He's talking about 18 months for completion of the project.
Open the doors.
You know, what obviously is also a factor that I'm not real clear on is the demolition of the towers, because they're going to be using our property in distributing their material, I guess, to be sold. And I haven't really been clear myself on how long a time they're gonna have to do that.
So, that's gonna have a factor also on that, whether it's gonna take them two or three months to do that. And what we did, if we worked with romance, that if we can help each other out in a partnership type to get the land prepped, the building removed, if y'all approve that, get the building removed, get all the sand dunes moved to locations that are approved by the GLO and the county, and have his construction crew help us prep the site for the construction aspect of it, as far as building.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge, and thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Anybody else that forgot to sign in that'd like to make a public comment at this time? All right. Item 4A, presentation by Coastal Solutions on the Coastal Erosion Mitigation Solution Beach Stabilization Project on South Padre Island and Cameron County beaches.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, I asked Marie Horgan to see if she can do a presentation to the Commissioners' Court. A few weeks ago, she made a presentation to the Town of South Padre Island, and as y'all may know, as, over the years, we've lost a lot of beach on the island. And normally, we were getting spores or the material from the ship channel, and they were dredging that and they were placing it on the beach. What's happened is, over the years, we've missed, not necessarily missed that cycle because of us, but because of the coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Texas General Land Office, we've missed those cycles. And last time, they had to make an emergency dredge, they hauled it offshore. But what we're trying to look for in, you know, the state, the GLO, and, you know, the Town of South Padre Island, and of course us, is trying to look for innovative ways to help Mother Nature or slow her down, keep, you know, that sand from being washed away. And Ms. Horgan, Ms. Garrett, actually, has an idea. And she's presented it to the Town of South Padre Island, and they've, correct me if I'm wrong, they have an agreement with her right now, because there's some KEPRA funding that the town applied for, and I believe it's around a million dollars. So, what, she has an idea, and the town is on board. And this area that she's proposing is the area just south of our park at Andy Bowie and just north of us, which is the shores. So, it's gonna be right in front of our park there at Andy Bowie. So, I asked her if she could make a presentation to y'all, just because it affects us in that area. Ms. Garrett?
Thank you, everyone. My name is Marie Garrett, and my company is Coastal Solutions. Again, my company is Coastal Solutions, and Coastal Solutions is a scientific technology company dedicated to stabilizing cosines. The process that we use is a patented process. It's called the Coastal Erosion Mitigation Solution. And what it is, is it's a turnkey system, so to say, that works by doing extensive analysis of exactly what is going on in the area. We drop instruments that measure wind and wave, and then we come up with a design that will work with nature to stabilize the beach and to keep it from rotting. This is what the project site will look like. And the project actually runs from the Hyamlar through the county park, and the Town of South Padre applied for a KEPRA Cycle 6 grant, and they awarded the grant. The grant itself is for $740,000, and it's a private-public match. So, we're working with the different beachfront homeowners for the rest of the match. But the town has unanimously voted to move forward with the project. The primary...
What's the percentage of the match?
The percentage of the match is 75/25.
Okay.
And of the 25, we're about 75/80% there. Mr. Patel was the first to step up to the table, and he committed $150,000 to the project. And the project is designed to create a structural framework that will help slow some of the sediment, to keep it in the area, as well as to reduce offshore loss and to provide wave protection. The system is made up of a number of low-profile geotextile tubes that are placed perpendicular as well as parallel offshore or detached tee heads, and then an angled breakwater. And again, this is what the project site looks like. The system is designed to work with the sandbars that are in place, and this one particular mile stretch has been historically erosive, more so than the other beaches on the island. And the way that, this is a conceptual design that we've come up with through the data that was readily available. And the design is such that it keeps the sand within the system, or it keeps some of the sand within the system and allows the other sand to bypass. And then, this is the, actually was done from the last profile, so that's what the topographic look of the area is. And this is just to give you some idea of the dimensions. The tubes are roughly placed about 1,600 feet apart. And this is what a side profile would look like. So, again, we're talking very low profile. They're about two feet off the ground. They are dredged into the beach at the mean high water line, and they extend out anywhere from 475 to 500 feet. And the offshore, the detached tee heads would be no more than three feet high, and they run about 200 feet. And then, the breakwater is about 300 feet long. The tube design is made for long-term lifespan, and again, they're very low-profile, made to match the sand. The tubes themselves are 10 to 15 feet in circumference. The geotextile matches the sand. It's going to take about 1,700 or so cubic yards to fill the tubes, and they are adjustable and adaptable. And this is the process that we go through, which we're just finalizing our contracts with the Town of South Padre to move forward, to drop instruments. So, we would be looking at construction about a year out. And what we're asking the county, as far as their participation, is, one, we will need an inter-local agreement between the Town of South Padre and the county. And then, two, we're also asking for $25,000 participation in the match.
Thank you. Any questions?
I know I hit you with a lot.
No, I think it was the last sentence that kinda woke me up here, when you went at $25,000.
Why do we...
You were doing great up until that part.
Yeah.
And then you notice everybody's wound just kinda went down after you said that. Well, good luck. Okay.
I do have a question. What is the cost, or is there any cost, if the system that is in place does not function the way it's meant to be?
We're actually...
And if we have to do adjustments, is that added cost to the...
We're actually, we're allowing the city to take out a portion of each invoice and to ask for $50,000 so if there should be anything that needs to be adjusted. And this is looked at as a demonstration project by the state, and I'll be working with the state on the maintenance and the monitoring of the program. And the tubes will be monitored on a quarterly basis.
By, by who?
By both us, the city, and then the state has an external engineering firm.
Okay. What is the main state agency that you would be dealing with? GLO?
General Land Office, yes.
GLO? So, you have no sites anywhere else that you've done such as this?
This is the first site in Texas. The patent has been used in a project in Florida that was a two-goal project. It was to stabilize the beach as well as to keep sand out of the path. So, it was a little bit different design.
I must have missed out, I might have missed out, and you might have covered this already. What would the maintenance be?
The maintenance and the monitoring are going to be covered by the state of Texas, and we're still deciding what the final number will be on that, because it will depend on how much monitoring is done.
It'll depend on what?
How much monitoring is done. So, we will be monitoring and maintaining the project. And we're doing that as an in-kind with the state, so they're matching, we're matching in-kind to what they're providing.
Is this going to be something that would be permanent?
That's what the goal would be, yes.
The goal would be making permanent, if it works?
Well, everyone realizes we need to do something to keep the sand in place. We, one, we won't have enough sand as it continues to wash away, and, two, as the General Land Office realizes, they won't be able to get the funding to cover the sand if it continually washes away. So, that's why they're looking at doing something that will stabilize the beach.
And then, I think the question's about maintenance. If we're talking about a permanent maintenance for years and years and years, then the state's willing to... willing to do that?
I think, I think they would work with the city, since, in essence, the city is the manager of the project. And if you look at the comparison of having to do a large nourishment, which, if you look at two miles or a mile, you're looking at somewhere between $7 to $10 million versus this is $1 million for a mile to help stabilize your beach, as well as to capture back sand that has eroded, the cost savings is, are tremendous.
So this is a modeling length that we're doing this?
Yes.
Right? And when you presented one of the slides, the overview of the project site, you had the little yellow lines depicting the-
Tubes.
The tubes that you're laying out. The ones that are coming off of the island-
Mm-hmm.
-are tubes also, right? If they're yellow, they're tubes?
Yes.
Okay. Those that come off of the island are buried, how far down did you say?
They're actually dredged into the beach at the mean-high waterline. So they're covered into the beach.
Okay. So you will see nothing out there?
You may see in the, like, the swash zone or the zone where the, just a small hump that will eventually fill in.
And how far into the land site do those tubes go?
To the mean-high waterline.
Okay.
Which today is about the beginning of the, all the beach has been gone, is gone after these high tides we've had over the last couple of days.
What, what kind of material is that tube? I'm just, this isn't my turf, so, you know, this may be common sense that I should know, but-
It's a reaved, it's a reaved geotextile.
I'm just thinking, is there some animals that might come and chew on it, or?
No, they're extremely, extremely durable.
Hmm.
There's been studies that have actually shown, since these are primarily submerged, most damage that will come to a geotextile tube would either come from vandalism or from sun exposure. And since these are covered, there's actually been studies that have shown a 50-year lifetime.
How long would it take to actually install them?
The actual construction would take 60 to 90 days, but the permitting and the collecting of the data, the modeling, we do both computer modeling and tank modeling to test the system before it's installed. That will take roughly a year.
And during the time, those 90 days, what would, would it cause, any damage to the environment?
No, I mean, we have to do everything within the regulations that are set by the environmental agencies. So if, say, if there's some vegetation that's affected, then we re-vegetate that area.
Does this require an EA?
Environmental protection.
An environmental assessment?
Assessment.
No.
To anyone? No?
Uh-uh. We've already had to join an environmental meeting with the Corps of Engineers, and it actually went very well.
Well, they're very concerned about the loss of beach area. Everyone is.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a very innovative approach to dealing with that problem. I know that Javier has been before us in the past with that issue, especially in front of the area that you're looking at. So even a $25,000 investment, it's not a whole lot of money to protect that beach, that vast area, when you consider the value of the properties there.
So here we go. Martha, where do we find it?
Well, it's got to come from the park system.
Javier?
So we asked Javier to look for it. How soon do you need this money?
It could be identified, or you could commit to it, and then you wouldn't have to contribute it probably for about six months, would be fine.
Who applied for this grant?
Towne South Padre.
And they applied for the grant without even coming to us and asking for a-
For help.
I reckon.
Well, part of it, part of our commitment was that we would, we would help them pursue the project. So we filled out the applications. We worked with the general land office. And I, that's, Javier has been aware of what was going on, and I have, I met with Commissioner Benavides to make her aware of what was going on. So I think it was more in my part, because I'm the driving force behind the grant.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Any questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge? By Commissioner Gatzner, and by Commissioner Wood, or in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Consent items. Any member of the court have any item that they wish to take out and discuss separately?
I think A, because-
I'm sorry, which one?
5A.
5A.
E.
5B.
O.
O as in, oh?
O.
P.
P as in Paul.
R.
P or T?
No. R.
R as in Robert.
T.
T as in Tom.
Y.
Y what?
Y.
Oh, Y.
Y like in-
Y is it like in, you, like in zebra before?
Zebra too.
Zebra also.
Double A.
A and N.
That's it for me.
Anybody else have any other items?
And they're very brief questions, I have.
Hearing men and sensing men, do I hear motion to approve all consent items with the exceptions of Item A, having to do with an interlocal agreement, the City of Hardingen, Item E, Item O, Item P, Item R, Item T, Item Y, Z, and Double A. Do I hear motion to approve all the rest by Commissioner Gatzner?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item A, consideration approval of interlocal agreement between Cameron County and the City of Hardingen. [laughing]
Okay. Pete, I just have some questions. I haven't, I haven't heard about this. Is that a definite figure?
Yes. What happened is that the City of Hardingen bid out an overlay, an inch and a half overlay on Garrett and Baker Potts, and they wanted, there was going to be a stretch that's in the county, and they wanted to see the county would fund that stretch. They'll do the work, or the contractor will do the work, but will provide this funding that correlates with the portion that is county. That way you have a transition from city to county and not get to a point to a county and that portion not be overlaid.
And does that amount reflect material or material and labor?
It's complete. What they did is they bid it out, and that was a low bid that came in, which I got with Louis, and he said that's an extremely good price, yes.
He felt like it was a good price?
Yes.
And we had done that on another piece two years ago.
Right.
The first piece of Garrett. We went through the exact same process, where the city bid it out. We had, we had an area that belonged to us, and then they had an area on the other end. So all we did was we-
Well, I just wanted to make sure that Louis had been involved.
Yeah, he did. We couldn't, we couldn't do it for this amount.
Okay. Motion for approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Gatzner. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item E, consideration and approval of monthly financial information and compliance with Local Government Code 114.023 and 024.
Was there an attachment to this?
Yes, it was sent out this morning via email.
We got it.
Well, I was in meetings from seven this morning till I walked in here, so I didn't see it.
And there were so many pages, I didn't print it out.
Okay. What, can you tell me about it?
What it is, is the consolidated budget to actual, which shows your revenue by department, the budget, and what the actual is year-to-date for the one month of October, and it shows your expenditures as well by department. And it's giving you a breakdown by department.
For the month of October?
For the month of October only, yes.
Okay.
Just information.
Martha, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And it's also a cumulative report, which shows the receipts and the disbursements by fund for the whole month. And we did not have any transfers in and out, so that was, that was not sent out. But that's, that's what the report is.
On the subsequent reports that you're going to do, I'm going to assume that you're going to do a year-to-date, and then in a column next to it, you're going to put the activity for that specific month, like-
Yes.
November, so November, and then cumulative October and November. Okay?
Yes.
With a percentage? Can you put a percentage on the far right?
I can, yes.
Okay. All right. Do I hear motion to approve?
And you are recommending that we approve it as you emailed it?
It's a presentation that's, that shows you what the data is to date, and it's a requirement by the court.
Okay. Is this a new requirement?
No, actually, it's been in effect, and we started presenting it to court in April or May of this year.
So we're going to get it how often?
It's monthly.
It's a monthly report.
It's a monthly.
Moved by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item O, consideration approval to provide Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services office space for the U.S. Census Bureau. You bet.
Judge Commissioners, good afternoon. We're looking to allow the Census Bureau to come in and to provide a center so that they can actually house an employee there at one of our clinics.
At the clinic or at the annex?
At the clinic. And actually, we kind of left it open in case the Census wanted to move around to any other facility within the department. But we were talking about the Lucio Clinic specifically when we wrote this agenda item.
Motion?
My question was, you know, if it was going to be like at all the different clinics that we have, or was it going to be at one place? I mean, they're going to provide materials. You'd hope that-
Right, right.
Provided county-wide, not at one location.
Right. And, and I hope it is one location, but that's what we were talking about. We were telling them the amount of people that were going through our Lucio Clinic. And so I don't know that they do this all the time, and they might have limitations as far as personnel, but we will encourage them to, to go to the other locations as well, maybe to come up with a schedule, and we can disclose it to the court.
And this will not interfere with the delivery of health services to our residents?
No, Commissioner, and we're actually trying to encourage everyone to participate in the census.
Do I do this as a, I'm, go ahead, Commissioner.
What I was going to say is, if they want to do outreach, and this is what this is all about, am I correct?
Right, mhm, yes, ma'am.
I mean, they should go to some of these parks where, like, for instance, a new park in La Paloma, they're packed at night. I mean, night after night, that park is, is really occupied. Residents are really taking advantage. And after, it would have to be after six, because these are people that work, and then they come and exercise at the park.
Right. And we were trying to establish a relationship with the Census to try and encourage them to do some of the outreach. So if you want to expand it to facilities beyond our department, and maybe I can work towards with other departments as well and try and get the Census out there?
I think that the, I think sending it out to the clinic is a good idea. However, I think it, you need to work it out with them, that they need to have a presence, either at the somebody on annex, the Hardingen Building, some of the parks, on a, on a regular basis from now until the end.
Okay.
And we would have to schedule it and post it on our website, or just get the message out, because just in that area alone, you know, we need outreach to everyone in the county, not just that specific population, but, you know, spend two days there, two days, you know, whatever do you do. And I'm sure Commissioner Tamayo can, can give you some good ideas to where to go. The problem with, like, the La Paloma and Willhanda Park, I don't know if they have, you know, the, a facility where they can sit there unless they set up a table on the outside as, as, as people come into the park. But y'all, y'all can work that out, but I think they need to expand it a little bit for more than just the Lucio Clinic.
Should, should along that line, there's a lady that's from the U.S. Census Bureau. Her name is Maria Luisa Cabazos.
Okay.
And she attended the last Citizens Advisory or Complete Count Committee meeting. And this is what she wants to do. I, at that meeting, invited her to have somebody out at the Brownie Road, at the Bob Clark Social Service Center. And that's what they're looking for, for somebody to open the doors for them. They asked, all we need is a table and two chairs. And, you know, they'll staff it. And so now, I don't know about after five o'clock, but I certainly invited them to come and, and be there. And so Maria Luisa Cabazos may be contacting you all for your different locations out in the county area.
Okay.
All right. More locations, the better, because we do need the outreach. We need to get the county.
Okay. If the court can give you permission to expand it beyond just the health department facilities-
I think that's what, I think that's what you heard.
Anywhere.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Gatzner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Don't go away. Consideration approval, okay, consideration approval for Cameron County Department of Health and Human Services Public Health Response Program to purchase four fridge-freeze portable vaccine refrigerator freezer units from Granger Inc. through Texmus, pricing utilizing the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Fund for amount, the amount of $16,000, $652.96. The other item, Item R, consideration approval for Cameron County Department of Health, blah, 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 to purchase seven commercial refrigerators utilizing the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Funds for the amount of $23,135. Commissioner?
My only concern is that if we have that much refrigeration space, we won't be that quick to make sure we disseminate the product to the public.
Right. And that's part of the planning process, was some of the commercial refrigerators, the purpose of that was, we were working with some of the schools so that they could house some of the refrigerators. But our, in our planning process as well, even our department can house those seven refrigerators, and the portable refrigerators were meant to transport-
To transport.
To other entities besides the health department.
Okay.
I'm reaching, in other words.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
Motion for approval.
On both of them?
Yeah.
Moved by Commissioner Gatzner, second by Commissioner Tamayo, on both items P and R. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item Carries. Item T, consideration possible action for a memorandum of understanding with the Brazzle Historical Association for a kiosk at Cameron County Courthouse. Do you pull that in, Commissioner?
I did, yes. Did we run this by the Texas Historical Commission?
We're going to hear from our historical people. Do you want to know if we ran this by Texas Historical?
No, this is from the-
Hi, Judge Commissioners, my name's Priscilla Rodriguez. I'm the Director of the Brazzle Historical Association, and this is Javier Garcia, who is the project coordinator. This is grant-funded through the Department of the Interior National Park Service, so everything has to be run through the Texas Historical Commission, and they are fully behind this project. This is part of a larger project where we're promoting the historic sites in Brazzle. It includes a bilingual walking tour map, CD driving tours, and line kiosks in different parts of downtown. And we're asking that one of them be placed here.
Okay. My question is, have we run this through the Texas Historical Commission? Because when we were doing the remodeling of this building and the work on it, everything we touched, did, or changed, they had to approve. So is there any issues?
I wouldn't think so.
There would be no issues with it.
Yeah. It's a standalone, like a ATM, right?
As long as we're not- You're not attaching it to the wall, just a standalone, and plug it in, and off and running, right?
It'd be great to have one here. We have people through here all the time, historically looking.
So legal, that should be a problem?
I haven't checked with them, but I can certainly do that if you want to, you know, approve the subject.
No, I mean, I just want to make sure-
But I wouldn't think so, just because it's not a permanent fixture.
It's not changing the architecture of the building, and so it's, it's fine.
You indicated this is part of the Texas Historical Commission's program.
They're actually one of the project partners on this project.
Move to approve. Why don't we approve it, subject to Louwia taking a look at it, and then we just went up to bring it back? Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay. Do I hear motion? Moved to approve. By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood, to go ahead and do it, subject to her. If we don't hear back from her, then it's a go.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Any, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. And thank you for the work that you guys do. Appreciate it.
Do they, do they know what kind of a timeline we're talking about, or?
We'll look pretty good in tomorrow. Move to approve.
Why don't we approve it, subject to Delvia taking a look at it, and then we just went up to bring it back? Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay, do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
By Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Wood, to go ahead and do it, subject to her. If we don't hear back from her, then it's a go.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Any, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. And thank you for the work that you guys do, appreciate it.
Do they know what kind of a timeline we're talking about, or...
We'll look pretty good in tomorrow.
Well, no, I mean from us. I mean, I feel like we need to tell you how soon we're back to you.
She'll call him. She'll call him, okay. All righty, thank you. That was moved by Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Wood. No further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item Y, consideration possible approval to allow concessionaire to provide contractor and temporary storage site for demolished construction material from Ocean Towers and to demolish a building at Beach Access Number Three, formerly known as Costa Rica Food and Spirits Restaurant.
Yes, Judge Commissioners, this here is the contractor that's demolishing the Ocean Towers building needs a site as a temporary storage site. And what he's gonna be doing is he's gonna be segregating the concrete and the steel from the demo material. And then it's gonna be set out and it's gonna be hauled off the site. There's a little area that, right behind the restaurant, I think it's in, I think I marked it in the exhibit, that was attached to the agenda. But what they wanna do is they wanna level that area and lay some type of base down so they can get their equipment on it and stuff. But it's only gonna be for, I think it was forty-five days, is that correct, Dave? About forty-five days, it's gonna be a real quick thing, they're just gonna segregate the sizes of material and then it's gonna be hauled off to a different site.
When is the demolition scheduled for?
They're shooting for the second week of December.
Any particular day?
They've started demoing some of the parking garage.
That's correct, right. The implosion is gonna be...
The implosion, I think, is one of the things concerned about. Have, you know, have they touched base with some of the adjacent property owners?
Mhm.
They have.
They have, and matter of fact, the group is very detailed about how they're doing this. And they've gone, and I think they're videotaping everything. They have some seismographic equipment out there, so when they do implode it, they can't come back, you know, and claim, you know, that there's, that there was some, you know, cracking of their walls or whatever because of the implosion. So all that stuff is being monitored by this group.
Okay. Is there any legal agreement in regards to protecting the county? I mean, all I got was a picture of the location. But do we have any kind of legal agreement with whoever it is that's doing this demolition? I mean, how can we be assured that all of a sudden we don't have a pile of rubble left in an area?
Commissioner, I, we would need to have some kind of agreement, but right now, we have an agreement with Costa Rica. They are the ones that are the less see of that property, so really...
Yeah, but they have an agreement to build something on the property, not to bring...
So, but what we would do is...
Materials to that property.
We would have an agreement where they would, with this company, and they need to be able to give their approval of letting us use, letting us use, let those people come in and store that property. So there does need to be an agreement. I think right now, I was just under...
Okay. There needs to be an agreement, for one. Number two is Ocean Towers, as it stands today, owes this county a considerable amount of back taxes. They've been removing materials from their property and selling it because they've had a garage sale out there, basically, for quite a while. I know that I've visited with John Gevada, and I don't know if John is here, but, you know, they owe the county not only taxes, but interest and penalties associated with that. If they implode this building and haul off the materials, how do we collect what is owed to us?
The taxes are primarily gonna be assessed against, I'm sure, the land, and we foreclose on the land. We don't want the building, I don't think, you know?
No, no, no.
We wanna get rid of it and get it clean.
Right, but the taxes are assessed on the improvements on the property, okay?
The lands are.
The land is ours. So the taxes assessed on this property is assessed on the improvements to the property. They are delinquent in their taxes.
Then we need to get our attorneys to file some injunction against them to stop the influx until we get paid.
You know, and not only do we need to stop them to file an injunction against this occurring, but I think we need to not give them permission to go and dump more stuff on county property. I mean, if they're gonna implode this building and move it onto another piece of county property, that doesn't make sense to me.
And what is the law firm saying? After all, you know, they're...
Delvia, did you, I know I called Delvia so she could hopefully...
I spoke with John Gevada, and as of this morning, they filed the lawsuit for the delinquent taxes against us.
But not an injunction?
No, it was a lawsuit for the delinquent taxes.
The law firm filed it?
Yes, ma'am.
And why hadn't they done it before? It seems like, it must have, they must have been motivated to do so when Commissioner Gatsas questioned it. They should have taken the initiative to do something about it.
They're delinquent on two thousand eight taxes and two thousand nine, but penalties and interest don't begin occurring until January one.
I think they wait like six months from June to file.
How much do they owe? Anybody know?
Eighty thousand, eight two oh eight.
For two thousand eight, it's eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, to the county.
No, well, eighty thousand is to all the taxing entities, and then there's a forty-some to the county.
About half of it is ours.
Mhm. And then for two thousand nine, I think it was fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven thousand for this year, but that's not yet delinquent until, I don't know.
After January twenty-first, yeah.
But I think we need to protect ourselves.
And they've been selling a lot of the stuff?
They've been selling a lot of stuff out there, it's a bigger wholesale.
I'm just wondering, what would an injunction, I know it'd stop it, but how would that cure it?
I don't know.
I mean, how would that put us in any better position than what we're in now?
And if they've been selling all of this stuff, surely they would be willing to step up to the plate and start paying off?
Yeah, but I think what the Commissioner is recommending is an injunction.
Well, I'm not recommending, I'm referring to legal, I'm saying, you know, we've gotta do something.
Well, and I'm just asking, what, how would an injunction put us in a better position than what we are now, if one was filed?
I don't know, because, I mean, the building is...
Yeah, I don't know.
Would it get you in a better position? Because if you have a demolition company that is working in place to demolish this building, and it's gonna implode, it's costing a lot of money for that to happen. If all of a sudden, you know, they have to stop on a daily basis, that costs money, to have people there waiting for something to happen. So they might be more apt to pay what they owe.
Or take a walk.
Well, let me clarify.
We have other legal remedies to go through.
Let me clarify something. How much do they owe as of now? Not in a couple of months?
Forty-three thousand.
How far behind are they?
Forty-three thousand, to the county.
To the county, forty-three thousand.
One year.
So it's just, so it's one year?
I don't know.
What's the term, the length of the lease on the land to them?
The lease?
So, we don't have an agreement for, we don't, we didn't lease the land for the Ocean Towers, no.
Whose land is it? They're telling us it's on our land.
No, it's not our land.
No, it's not, no.
Thought it was our land.
Or is the taxes on the land, or the...
No, it's the improvements done.
Improvements. That goes to the land also, the improvements.
Well, then who owns the land?
It's not personal property taxes, it's improvements to the land. We can foreclose on the land for whatever taxes are due on the improvements, they don't segregate that out.
I don't know, we don't know who owns the land.
What steps have they taken to try and collect the taxes?
I think just the normal process.
Letter, or...
Yeah, letters and calls and things of that sort.
Well, I'd like to hear what the law firm has done up to now, to try and collect the taxes.
Well, no one's, no one's here.
I didn't, I didn't...
Well, I'd like to hear at the next meeting, if not sooner. Pete?
It might be imploded by then.
No, we meet before the implosion, I think.
Yeah, we'd have to hear before.
I don't know, I just thought it was interesting.
If they own the property, then the taxes are on the property, and the improvements are on the same account number, it's not personal property.
Right, and it's just like any other...
So we can always foreclose on the property for taxes.
Right.
And that's what they're doing.
But we want it to be clean first, before we foreclose on it.
Well, yeah, I mean, all of a sudden, they say, you know what, you all, it's fine keeping, you all implode it.
Yeah, and then again, there's other avenues, you know, there's legal remedies, I'm sure, to do some of that stuff, you know?
Don't know.
And how long did you say it's gonna take to undo the building and take the rebarb or the concrete apart? And that wouldn't stop you from doing anything that you wanna put on there? Well, I just don't want for you to, if this doesn't pan out the way it's supposed to, then you come back to the court and say, well, they stopped us, you know? That's...
Well, I think that Commissioner Benavides is right on the dot, because when you were up here with Javier, you mentioned to us that depending on the demolition of Ocean Towers, that could delay the project. So, that's the case. You know, why should, why do we need to get involved with this?
Well, I think we need to get back in our swimming lane here, because...
Why should we allow debris in our property?
Yeah, we need to get back to this specific agenda item. I think that the point you brought up regarding the out of alarm tax is a valid point, but that's what we need to get from our, from our tax collector and our delinquent tax firm, to come back and find out where they are with that process. I don't believe that asking them to delay the demolition or the implosion is going to do anything in terms of collecting our taxes, but we need to do that. And Pete, just get them to come in, don't have to make a presentation to us, but have them respond to us in writing, maybe teach member of the court as to where they are with that specific tax account. But on this one, let's get back and find out, do we allow the concessionaire, which is Costa Rica, right, to... You're getting some money for this?
The demolition?
So y'all are bartering on this, and I mean, in exchange for them using your facility, they're lending you something?
But our contract with them, with Costa Rica, he's gotta get the county's permission in order to allow someone else to come in. It's almost like a sublease. Well, you still have to get permission from the county to do this.
I guess my question is, are you all bartering something here? It sounds to me like you are. Right, I mean, you're allowing them to use your property in exchange, you're using their equipment to do, you know, do your deal.
Other work.
So you're bartering, in essence? Okay, all right, I just wanted to get, be clear on that.
Yeah, the other thing that they have offered is to demolish the building, that's one of the things I want to get, you know, direction from the court on, is do we wanna do that if this passes?
Don't know which building, that's Costa Rica?
The restaurant. Yeah, I know that we would have to get certain permits. If we do go in that, go that route, check it for asbestos and so on, so...
Well, let's go back onto this, is what is the court's wish in terms of giving them permission for temporary storage? And that's where all this originated. What is your recommendation, Javier?
I don't want to.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
What is your recommendation?
I would recommend that we do allow the temporary storage and we come back with an agreement with either Costa Rica or for Willvan, to allow them... Because what we're doing is also, as part of this, as David was trying to explain, was they're gonna scrape off about six inches of sand and vegetation, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna push that out to the golf site and help protect that site. Because right now, there's just sand and it blows back and forth, and recently, about three months ago, we pushed sand back up because of the storm service.
But don't you continuously do that with your own forces?
Mhm.
Right? I mean, that's like an ongoing...
That's not something we aren't doing already.
Well, not on, I mean, we don't go out and scrape the vegetation and the sand from our property and push it out. I mean, we do it from the beach area. I mean, we rake the beach, we pick up all the seaweed, we push it up to the sand dunes.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Wood to approve, same by Commissioner Benavides, discussion?
I have a concern, I just have a concern with potential problems for us in allowing, basically a sublease is what we're doing to some extent. And all we have is a lot of exposure. You know, you talk about, even to demolish the building, you need to do an asbestos abatement or asbestos check or whatever. We don't know what is being brought in. We have no control over what is being dumped there. We don't know, I mean, we have no idea what they're doing.
See, my question was, do we have an agreement that would specify exactly what we expect from them if we're going to allow them to do this? And I apologize, I don't remember if there was a back...
No, there wasn't. This is just to get the approval, what we would have to do is come back the next meeting with some type of contract.
If we would go ahead with this, and I'm a little leery whether I want to or not, but I would want an agreement specifying what it is that we're going to expect from them. From them, Ocean Towers? Pardon? From them, Ocean Towers and Costa Rica? Responsible for any liability? Is that what you said? Well, the two things that I would want to see is, number one, what they would do after it's over, what do we expect from them as far as the surface? What is it that they're gonna do? And I'm not an expert on this, but I'm sure Javier, that you would be able to know what it is that we expect from them after they get through? And what that area's supposed to look like after they get through. Number two, I'm concerned about the liability, as Commissioner Gatsa brought up, about what they're going to, what is it that they're going to be piling? And is there danger there for any contamination of any kind? Those are the two issues I'm concerned about, and who would be liable for anything that would happen due to that?
I think any contamination, Commissioner, that may occur is just from the equipment, you know, any oil or anything like that. Because the only thing that they're gonna be processing through there is concrete and the steel that they're gonna be pulling out of the building. This machine, what it does, it has a huge magnet, and what it does is it pulls that steel from the concrete, and they separate that and they separate the concrete. And they're gonna haul that concrete off and then the steel off.
That's all the...
That's it.
That's all the problem?
That's all their...
All the rest of the...
And it's monitoring that to make sure that that is what they're doing?
Well, we would have to, and of course, TCQ also monitors that as well, because they...
They don't want to do it for free, right?
Yeah.
What I want to do, got a motion, a second, to, to approve. Any further discussion?
I would go along with it, with the specification that I would want to see the agreement and have legal look at it to where my two concerns are addressed.
Well, I want to do this, then, if, if y'all like to withdraw your motion and second, and table it, and then at the next meeting that we have, bring it back with the agreement, and hopefully, in that time, our legal has had the opportunity to review it and can make a recommendation along with, along with you as well. That's okay. That still gives us some time, because...
I don't have a problem.
Okay? Because I, that, that still gives us some time. If they need to delay the implosion a week or so, that's fine, but, but we have to make sure we take care of the county's property. Okay?
That's fine. I agree to withdraw.
Do I hear a motion? Commissioner Wood withdraws his motion. Commissioner Benavides withdraws her second. So, now do I hear a motion to table the item? Move by Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Tamayo, to table, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. So, y'all work on that agreement with whoever you've got to work with?
Aye.
Okay? And then get that to us. Our next meeting is, is scheduled for, I believe, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Is that correct, Pete?
Twenty-four.
Correct?
Fourth.
Okay. And so, we'll do that, okay?
When is the next meeting?
Okay. All righty. Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Okay, item Z is in zebra, consideration authorization to approve tolling agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
I read the agreement, and I cannot decipher anything as to what it means. So, can you like briefly tell me what it is?
Well, what this is, I can tell you why it's, it's prepared. What is, what happened is the Sea Ranch Marina, when they got their permit to build their, their dock, their extension on their docks, on the north, well, actually, they originally applied for both docks, for the south and the north end of the marina. They got a permit just for the north side. They built the, the south side without a permit. So, what the Army Corps of Engineers is doing, I guess they're putting us on notice, and see, the county is the, the recipient of that, that permit, not the concessionaire. So, we're being put on notice that this south dock has to be permitted, and they're going to, they're willing to approve an after-the-fact permit. The concessionaire has to go out and hire this consultant and get this permit approved, and they're working on that right now.
Commissioner? And I might be able to help. What this agreement also is required by the federal registry, and what it does is, it says that the county cannot come back to the Corps of Engineers and say, hey, you can't come after us because you've run out of time to file a potential, you know, lawsuit for this violation, you know, that we built this dock without a permit. So, what this agreement does is it stops the running of the statute of limitations while they, while we do what we need to do to get the permit. And we can only, they can only issue that after the fact permit if we sign this agreement, which stops the running of the statute of limitations.
Okay. So, who applied for the permit initially?
The Sea Ranch Marina, but what they did was they came to the county and requested that the county sign the application.
Okay.
And, and back then, it was back in 2001.
And we signed the application?
We signed the application.
And it only, it included both, south and north channels?
Yes, yes. They only permitted though just the north end.
So, they, they went ahead and, when, when they permitted the north, I mean, don't they send you back a document saying what they permitted?
Well, what you do is you send back a, a little card saying that you completed the project, and that's it. I mean, have they come out and do an, an audit?
No, 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 but when you, when you...
Initially?
When you initially request a permit, they send you back a document?
Oh, yes.
And that document did not say that it was just for the south channel? I mean, the engineer or whoever was responsible for the organization doing this didn't read that?
I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know who was involved in that permitting, because they've changed, of course, I'm not sure if you remember, back it was owned by somebody else, and then the, the new group took over the, the marina, they've changed harbor masters, you know, every year, two years. But I'm not sure what had occurred, or who had prepared the application.
So, the bottom line is, we have, as a county that signs off on a document with the Army Corps of Engineers, have no recourse or oversight as to what happens on a project.
We should.
We should.
We should.
Okay? And it's very evident that we don't. So, we need to make sure and include some kind of protection for us. When, when, I mean, even if it's through our own engineering department, we have our engineering department that can at least look at these documents, review them, does that require like a building permit of some sort or not from the county?
I'm not sure. But you know, Commissioner, I don't, I don't know why we even signed the application. Normally, it's, you know, whoever's applying for it would normally sign, it doesn't necessarily have to be the property owner, but for whatever reason...
What are we signing, what are we signing off on?
We're signing the application...
For the permit?
For the permit.
For the permit.
I don't, I, I just couldn't figure it out. Good explanation, I guess.
But you couldn't understand it?
Did I answer?
Extremely bureaucratic.
Yeah, I kind of answered my question, you know, but there's, there's oversight that has to be done either through our engineering department, either through legal department, either through your department or somebody to, to make sure that this kind of stuff doesn't happen. Do I have a motion?
Sir, move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Diaz, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five double A, which is consideration and authorization to approve a beachfront construction certificate and dune protection permit for Costa Rica food and spirits to all for a dune enhancement project on four point eight, eight, seven acres out of Ende Buoy Park. Javier?
Commissioner, I recommend we table this one since it's tied to letter Y.
Okay.
Bring it back, bring it back.
We'll bring it back with the other one?
Move to table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item six, which is action items, budget amendments, line item transfers, indoor salary schedules. Ms. Galarza?
I put some, we have the budget amendments that were sent out. The first two pages of the budget amendment, the first one is setting up vehicle repairs that Constable Precinct Six needs, and those are going to be coming out of his drug forfeiture fund balance. The next budget amendment is to set up the budget for the mental health transport based on the contract with Vali Baptist. And the next budget amendment on page two, that is the district clerk, district clerk's budget amendment, they're using their projected district court technology reserve funds that they're going to be generating this year to purchase the data processing scanners that they, that they need for their clerks. And the next budget amendment is setting up funding for a position that the DA needs, and that is going to be paid out of the drug forfeiture fund, and that increase is going to be coming from projected forfeitures, forfeiture money that they will be receiving this year, this fiscal year. The next pages, page three and four, are general budget amendments that are needed within departmental, they are budget neutral, and they are just to cover some of the expenditures, operating expenditures that they need.
Okay.
And then I have a salary schedule that I put in front of y'all. The only one that is signed is the one that I had left in front of Judge Coscos's chair, and at the time that I came down for the meeting, the salary schedule had not been signed by the DA's office yet. They came in and they did sign it, but I had René Arsa sign...
Say René's here, can you?
Yes, he signed the one that's right there in front of...
Okay, so that's signed.
So, that's, that's fine.
Yes, and that's setting up the funding for slot number seventy-two, which is a assistant DA, which is covered by the budget amendment as well.
Okay.
I recommend the approval.
Any questions on any of the line item transfers, budget amendments, indoor salary schedules?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. B is approval of claims.
I have payroll dated November thirteenth, and total payrolls, payroll totals one million six hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. I also have ACH payments to cover medical claims for two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Regular accounts payable warrants are claims number two-two-eight-three-one-six through Also, warrants number two-two-eight-six-five-six through two-two-eight-nine-nine-zero. Warrants number two-two-nine-one-four-two through two-two-nine-one-four-three. Payroll-related claims are warrants number two-two-eight-nine-nine-four through two-two-nine-one-one-six. Void warrants are numbers two-two-eight-seven-four-nine and two-two-eight-seven-seven-nine. I also put in a notice for an additional payroll warrant, it looks just like this, I put it in front of y'all, and this payroll, this particular payroll will not be generated until tomorrow, and that was not generated for today because we needed to have the budget amendment and the salary schedule approved first. So, those are the ones that I have for your approval.
You recommend the approval?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Sir, move.
Move by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note my abstentions under affidavits that I provided. Item C, approval of minutes for October the fifth and October the fifteenth, a special and a regular meeting respectively, 2009. Court members have opportunity to review the minutes and ready for their approval?
Sir, move.
I have.
Move by Commissioner Garcia, same by Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, consideration authorization for sixty-month copier lease with State of Texas Xerox contract, DR SDD five fifteen. Michael?
Are they the same, right?
Yeah, let's also do E, consideration on the same deal except for it's for the, one is for the four forty-fourth, one is for the four forty-fifth. It's within budget, Michael? Do we have the budget, they have the budget for it? Somebody?
Michael?
Is it within their budget?
It's signed up.
This is budgeted in the regular operating budget. I believe the reason this is being brought on an individual discussion item is because it exceeds the direction that Commissioners Court wanted to follow with copiers.
Okay, what do you mean exceeds the direction?
The forms that I just handed out on the first page, the court adopted to try and save on copier cost a benchmark machine, which is on the top of page number one. It's a two-hundred-dollar copier. The number of copies per month would be twenty-five thousand copies allowance and a forty-five per minute, per page per minute machine. The department's requesting the two courts, a machine at four hundred and forty-eight dollars a month. The number of copies per month would be ten thousand per month.
Which would be less?
It would be a lot less, you know?
A lot less.
Ten thousand versus twenty-five thousand. The speed is a little faster, it'd be a fifty-five copy machine. And what they're looking to do, I believe, is to try and get some color into their copying needs. So, this machine that they're requesting at four hundred and forty-eight would actually give them approximately eighteen hundred copies per month. So, we're looking at a little, well, close to two hundred and fifty dollars more per month, per machine.
You know, we adopted these, I think Commissioner Wood brought it up, you know, try to standardize not only copiers, but standardize laptops and equipment and stuff like that, so why are we, I'm not saying you, but why, why are we wanting to deviate from what we already adopted? We adopted a budget that was tough to adopt, and now thirty, forty, forty-five days into the, into the budget, we're asked, we're being asked to spend more than we adopted?
And, and...
Other than, than if somebody wants color?
Yeah, this is, this is a departmental request. We, we do have four departments so far that got the two-hundred-dollar machine, one was planning, human resources, the sheriff's office, and just recently at your last Commissioners Court, the three fifty-seventh district court got the two-hundred-dollar machine as well.
Okay.
That was Judge Alejandro?
Judge Alejandro, correct.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think that if we treat them all the same, they all share the same copy, type of copy machine, and if this were less, it'd be different, but it's not, it's more.
So, I think it's just, it's going back to the fact that, you know, the environment had been such that the court would vote on something, but then they'd come up and would make an exception. And I think that's the environment it had in the past, and it's hard for people to change, and...
Well, it's up that they change.
If we make, if we make an exception for them, then we should make an exception from anybody else that comes and stands up here. I do recall in, in talking about trying to save money, that's when Commissioner Wood brought this up.
He's trying to standardize these equipment purchases.
Yeah, standardizing it, so I, I can't see us making an exception.
Okay, well, on item D and E, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve our standard machine that we normally approve.
Well, but that's not what this is.
Not the agenda.
So, the standard one is just standard, you don't even need to bring it to Commissioners Court, so if, if no one makes a motion on, on these two items, then it dies.
And they go, and they go by what we have voted on.
Well, shouldn't we move to not?
No, just don't do it.
Because they need to know whether, what we did.
Well, when they get approval, they'll know what we did. We'll table it.
I move that we don't approve them.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia moves that we do not approve them. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
It dies.
Well, I'll second it just so, bless everybody out. I second Commissioner Garcia's approval to not approve. All in, all in favor to not approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item F, consideration approval to reduce the court inspection, one hundred and twenty dollars in septic tank permit, one hundred and twenty-dollar fees for the Santa Rosa self, self-help project.
Yeah, that's a good project.
We have a quick PowerPoint presentation. Judge Commissioners, you should have a copy of our PowerPoint presentation. It is a two-sided document, but you can follow it because it does have page numbers on there.
Thank you.
Where was that document?
Where was that document?
If we make an exception for them, then we should make an exception for anybody else that comes and stands up here. I do recall in talking about trying to save money, that's when Commissioner Wood brought this up.
He's trying to standardize these equipment purchases.
Yeah, standardizing it, so I can't see us making an exception.
Okay, well, on item D and E, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve our standard machine that we normally approve.
Well, but that's not what this is.
Not the agenda.
So the standard one is just standard, you don't even need to bring it to Commissioners Court. So if no one makes a motion on these two items, then it dies.
And they go, and they go by what we have voted on.
Shouldn't we move to not?
No, just don't do it.
Because they need to know whether, what we did.
Well, when they get approval, they'll know what we did. We'll take it.
I move that we don't approve them.
Okay, Commissioner Garson moves that we do not approve them. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
It dies.
Well, I'll second it, just so we'll flush everybody out. I second Commissioner Gar's approval to not approve. All in, all in favor to not approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item F, consideration approval to reduce the probe inspection, one hundred and twenty dollars in septic tank permit, one hundred and twenty-dollar fees for the Santa Rosa self-help project.
Yeah, that's a good project.
We have a quick PowerPoint presentation. Judge Commissioners, you should have a copy of our PowerPoint presentation. It is a two-sided document, but you can follow it because it does have page numbers on there.
Thank you.
Where was that document?
Where was that document?
It's a black and white, I believe that they-
Oh, okay.
I'll try to hear.
I like the createdness of TOP.
That was the area residence. This project is in Commissioner Thamayo's precinct, so she is taking the lead on the project, and the Health Department is providing the support services. I'd like to introduce a couple of individuals that are also involved with this project, and if the court has any detailed questions, then we probably need to defer to them. We have Rosie Mendiola from TRII, she is the Outreach Specialist. And then we have Keta Caballera with the Office of Secretary of State. Okay. Can we have our presentation up, so I guess we can get started. The goal of the Santa Rosa Proyecto TOP is to connect first-time water services to one hundred and seven, one hundred and seven or more households living east, northeast of Santa Rosa. Partnership includes, okay, I'm only going to say this once, the Rensselaer Institute, who has been coordinating with east, northeast Santa Rosa area residents, Officers of Secretary of State, North Alamo Water Supply Corporation, Texas Water Development Board, and we hope that Cameron County will also be a partner in this endeavor. TRI, the Santa Rosa Project, Santa Rosa Proyecto TOP is the first TRI project in Cameron County. So if you have not heard of TRI, it's because Cameron County has not had this project before. TRI is a nonprofit organization who has a self-help program that assists communities with grant applications. And TRI is the project leader for a grant application to the Texas Water Development Board Colonia Self-Help Program. As part of the grant application, currently there have been one hundred and seven households that have been meeting, and they are the individuals who voted and selected the title for this grant application to be the Santa Rosa Proyecto TOP. The project area is Pomelo Road, east of Santa Rosa, from Orphanage Road to State Highway one oh seven, Thompson Road from Ratliff Road to State Highway one oh seven, and Ratliff Road from Pomelo Road to Thompson Road. The Texas Water Development Board has a Colonia Self-Help Program grant. The grant provides assistance to colonias for the actual cost to get water and wastewater systems to provide adequate service. Part of the grant, there is a requirement that forty percent of the project must be from in-kind services, and in this particular one, it's from residents and entities, which is the partnerships. Residents provide volunteer labor sweat equity to construct the facilities and/or donate equipment, materials, and supplies. And entities such as Cameron County can partner through reduced cost and other in-kind services. The, the Proyecto TOP, the total budget that they're currently looking at right now is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and forty percent of the four hundred and twenty-eight thousand is one hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred, and then the difference is the two hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred. From, for this, for the purposes of talking, we're looking at possibly in-kind services of ten thousand dollars from Cameron County, and then the difference of one hundred and sixty-one thousand will come from the area residents who will provide the sweat equity, and North Alamo Water Supply Corporation who will contribute the main line. If we're talking about the ten thousand dollars, and the reason why we're saying estimated is because there might be more households later on involved in the project, so ten thousand is a good estimate. In order to get the ten thousand dollars, what we're asking from the court is to reduce the current probe inspection and septic tank permit fees by fifty percent. And then what we'll see is the calculation at the bottom of the PowerPoint presentation that it's a little over ninety-six hundred dollars. From the public health perspective, we are really supportive of this project because we always want our residents to have safe sanitary water for drinking, cooking, and cleansing. And water companies, they have the capability to monitor and control water contamination levels, which is very different from utilizing well water. Also, what's really important to us is that the water filtration and the treatment helps control the spread of water-borne diseases such as E. coli, and this is something that the water companies can assist with. Also, continued access to water service even during electrical power outages is, you know, something that a lot of us take for granted, but it is a problem for some residents. And lastly, because this is the first project, we hope to have other projects like this within Cameron County. So this could impact the future projects. It goes back to the fees. Currently, what you see is our probe inspection, septic tank permit, and reinspection fees, but we're hoping that the court will consider changing it to allow a nonprofit component so that we can, a change, to reduce the fee so that we can participate in this project.
Now, somewhere that I remember we talked, I asked you all the question about what would be the time that our inspectors would have to take, being that they do the, what do you call that?
Right, the inspection, we estimated about-
That the residents would have the area ready for them to inspect. So doing that, and that's what's into this contract or this agreement, it would take the inspector's swat from fifteen minutes? What was it that they said?
Yes, it'll take, it takes our health inspector about fifteen minutes to actually look, you know, to perform the probe inspection duty and to actually see if they're meeting the requirements. But in the meantime, before the probe inspection is done, the resident is responsible for actually working the ground and, but you know what, I think Gustavo, I guess you had better words than what I did.
They're ready for, and I understand, I could understand what the, because it's important that the residents be contributing, and that's what, that's what is quite impressive, is that they will. Through, they don't have the money, but they have, but they will be giving their time in doing this.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The process, what the homeowner will have to do is have to prepare the, prepare for inspection, which will be just a real simple, which they will have to locate where the septic systems are, uncover the both of the septic tanks, and locate where the drain began and where it ends. What that does for us is just to be sure that those septic systems are working in proper conditions, and they're in good conditions for, before they provide water services to them.
And looking at, looking at the public health impact, this is an area that after Hurricane Dolly, we had a lot of problems with, with water contamination, due to the fact, of course, that they had the septic tanks, and there was a lot of rain, and there was a lot of flooding. So it is an area that is in desperate need of this type of project.
And I have Rosie here, and she can give the court maybe some of the information that, when she's been meeting with the residents and some of their excitement, and maybe even trying to get ahead of the project because they want to make sure that the project is secure, and maybe you can talk about some of the sweat equity.
Before you go there, Gustavo, what happens if you find a system that is not up to standard, though?
Okay, we would advise the owner, advise him that the septic system is not up to the standards, which they would have to-
You're not going to issue a ticket?
No, sir. What we would do is we would actually, we would actually, actually, fix the problem within the amount of time. They wouldn't be able to leave it that way, put it that way.
You won't be able to connect?
Right, and also they would have to fix the problem.
Okay.
They wouldn't be able to leave it that way.
Okay.
Hello, Commissioners. The sweat equity that is involved with this self-help program deals with the residents. To date, we have had numerous community meetings, and they are aware that their sweat equity is what's going to make this project a success. Their sweat equity is, for example, with the uncovering of the septic tank tops so that the probing can be done. So by the time the inspector goes around, that will be readily available to them, and that will only take fifteen, ten to fifteen minutes to do the inspections. Anything else? The residents are aware that if there's anything else that they can contribute that would, of course, save this project funds, they are more than willing to do it, and they are very excited about this first-time water services coming to them. Some of them were not able to be here, I know there were a lot of them, but they work, so normally our meetings are in the evening around six to eight o'clock. So they're aware, and they're excited, and they're hoping that we do gather your support as well.
Thank you.
I've had the opportunity to work with the Rensselaer Institute in conjunction with the Secretary of State's office on a project that unfortunately did not get done because of things outside all of our control, but found them extremely good to work with and very, you know, wanting to improve the livelihoods and the standard of living of the folks in our, in our county, and I do appreciate their work. And I know Commissioner Thamayo, you're going to be able to enjoy a lot of this, good benefits that they're going to be providing. It's a very good thing.
So I, I'm, that was an external presentation. I told them summarize it as much as possible, but I don't know if you all might have any other questions to go with it. Pretty clarified.
If it's going to help the community.
If not, I-
There's no, there's no issues, right?
No issues.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this project.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I will go to item L, which is consideration. Thank you very much. And possible action on beachfront construction certificate and doom protection permit for Larry Mark Polcey for the development of Seabreeze Estates. I think Javier wants to leave.
Needs to go say this little girl.
Commissioners, we brought this back, and I think we discussed it briefly in the presentation from the GLO. There are some issues still pending that the GLO has, and what I want to do is present the court with the facts that, that we have in hand, and I'm sure there's four members of the committee here, and they can attest to their evaluation of the application, and I would welcome them to come up and talk about it. But what I handed out TRI is a section of the law that, that the General Land Office is referring to, and there's a, there's a discrepancy in the way, of the way the wording of our plan is and what the state law is. On the first page, letter C, I highlighted, it says prohibition of erosion response structures. Number one, it says a local government shall not issue permit authorizing construction of a retaining wall within the area two hundred feet long of the land of vegetation. You know, if you go to the second page, I highlighted number three, it says, and this also prohibited activity. It says not construct any erosion response structure except the retaining wall located greater than two hundred feet long of the land of vegetation. So it's kind of confusing, it says except, but then it says you can, it has to be greater than two hundred feet long of vegetation. So the other thing that, that has, there's three things in this application, Commissioners, it's the retaining wall structure, it's the swimming pools, and it's the mitigation plan that the applicant submitted. Those are the three issues as of yesterday that the General Land Office has issues with. And I say that yesterday because we just got a letter in today that they added one more thing to the list. So, and I let Herb, or Chair, or one of those members to talk about that. The other thing that I added here is a definition of a retaining wall. Number sixty-two says retaining wall, structure designed to contain, or which primarily contains material prevents sliding of land. Retaining walls may collapse under the forces of non-erative activity. And then the next page, of course, is the definition of an erosion response structure, and that's more of a hard structure, a rigid structure.
Where is that definition?
That's on the, the fifth page, Commissioner.
I got sixty-two.
I can show it to you. It's one page.
Okay, so it's kind of backwards.
Okay, it's backwards, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, it's thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Yes.
Ours is-
So what are we supposed to know about this? You know, I mean, what's the bottom line of, of all this? I mean, there's a bunch of pages here, there was a bunch of pages here, you know, what, what-
Well, I think we need a recommendation.
Well, I think that our Advisory Committee, Advisory Board has, has a recommendation.
Okay.
Do we not?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioners, and Doyle Wells would have been here today, but he's, he's getting down here from Austin, but he was hung up. On three different occasions, the committee has met, on three different occasions, it has approved the applicant's request. Some of these things that the state is wanting you to do, for instance, the retaining walls. If you go, if you have an imaginary line, and you're in the town of South Padre Island, you can have a retaining wall, but they're saying outside the county, you can't have it. Inside the town of South Padre Island, you have to build on grade. Well, the only way to keep the sand under your house on a little fifty-foot lot is with a retaining wall. The county beach and dune rules specifically say no erosion response structures except for a retaining wall, and we feel like that, you know, it's in there for a reason. Back in ninety-three, when the original ordinance was written, there were several South Padre Island residents on that committee, and they saw the retaining walls being built in the town. Although there's nothing in writing from the GLO as far as pools, they see swimming pools being built. The letter that Javier references today is really a rehashing of everything-
Yeah.
Except now the GLO is saying, we don't want you to build a driveway to your house. So the GLO is saying, you can build a house, but we don't want you to put a retaining wall around it to keep the sand under your house. You can build a house, but we don't want you to put a driveway to your house. So I, I think there needs to be a little common sense put to this. The rest of the members are here. Like I said, we met the first time after six weeks. We finally, after forty-eight days, not thirty, got the GLO's responses, went through the GLO's responses, point by point, answered it. Javier sent a letter, and then we met one more time, went over it again, and again reaffirmed the decision of the committees. So the committee stands by its original recommendation.
And, and your recommendation is based on the fact that you have checked very carefully that the law is being followed?
Yes, ma'am.
The rules are being followed?
Yes, ma'am.
Where's the letter? I didn't get a copy of that.
I just got it today.
That was forwarded to me by email.
It was forwarded to you?
And so I made copies right before the meeting, and provided each one of you a
But in that letter, of course, this is a very bureaucratic letter, they don't really give you straight answers in reference to what we're talking about.
Basically, the, the top ninety percent of that letter is rehashing what they said in their prior comment letter. The only item they added was now they're saying you can't have a driveway. Well, if you can't have, if you can't have a driveway, then look at all that asphalt that the county laid at Access Five, the streets and the parking lot, well, that should be all illegal. And-
Probably is. We just didn't get a person.
But what they're saying here is not in their Bible. I call that enormous book that has your, your laws. Are they laws or just their rules?
Well, again, the GLO has comment authority only.
Pardon?
The GLO has comment authority only in reference to any request that comes to you. You issue the permit. You issue the beachfront, beachfront construction permit. The GLO comments, but you have the final authority to issue it one way or the other.
And your recommendation is that we issue the permit?
That we do it.
I'll make a motion to issue the permit.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and second to proceed as recommended by our committee and Javier, and we certainly appreciate all the effort and work you've put into-
Exactly.
-that process, and we'll hear from them later, we will. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
And the rest of the members, I know that you spend hours at this meeting.
Chair Menendez, Charlie Braumer, and Javier, and Mr. Tom Tepper are interested in partying all this, but we see it as important because this is- But we see it as important because this is the first full residential construction project in Cameron County. And if you let the state come in and say, no pools, no driveways, I mean, not going to be much construction.
Thank you for your presentation.
Make sure we let Doyle and things went very smoothly without him here.
I don't want to tell him that.
I'll give him a call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have item G, which is consideration and approval of advanced funding agreement between Cameron County and the Texas Department of Transportation for the Harlingen Switchyard relocation project. Pete?
Commissioners, this is the, an advanced funding agreement between Cameron County and Texas Department regarding the relocation of the Union Pacific Switchyard from downtown Harlingen to Almito. I passed out some corrections. There's two additional pages. Most important one is the attachment C, which contains the cost. The cost that was in the original, in your packet, Texas Department had utilized the wrong cost estimates. So what I passed out as attachment C, the correct.
Attachment C is the one you're referring to.
But not the one that was in your packet, the one that we passed out. You should have two pages.
Where is that?
I'm sure it's your C.
There were a lot of passed out stuff today that kind of disappeared for me. Why don't you just correct the numbers, Pete, on attachment?
Could you correct them?
Attachment C?
Attachment C, yeah.
Oh, I saw something like that somewhere.
There's a minute order, Texas Department.
I missed all of this.
I cast a mirror.
I'm not even going to look for it.
It was the FAA, yes.
Somewhere.
Yeah, just correct it for us, Pete.
Okay. The total cost, the total estimated cost is $17,231,292. The local government participation, $5,6,657. Subsequent to this agreement, there is an MOU between Cameron County, the RMA, City of Harlingen, and Union Pacific. That agreement is 99% done. It should, I should be able to place it on the next commissioner's court. That agreement will outline the different responsibilities that each entity will have. But this is the first agreement that needs to take place, which is the advanced funding agreement between the county and Texas Department, which basically saying that the county will take the lead on the project, we will let the project, we will be in charge of inspecting and construction management on the project.
And Judge Protem, if I may say something. I definitely want to thank David and Pete. It's been years of working on this. I know that Harlingen has been very cooperative, they've done their part, but quite frankly, these two guys have really sweated it out and trying mainly to, you realize the parties involved and what it takes to come up with an agreement between all these entities. So thank you, Pete and David, for all your work. Now, I'm even afraid to ask, so what do you think the timeline is?
On?
On getting the agreement? It's 99% finished.
Yeah, like I said, we're off to run for our next commissioner's court meeting.
It'll be, it'll be.
Yeah, I talked to City of Harlingen, and he'll put it on for your next regular meeting.
He's got it pretty well done.
Yeah. And then the RMA will put it on, and then the last one will be U.P.
Wonderful.
And then the idea is to start construction by February.
And I'm going to ask the question that I probably shouldn't, but how's the EA process at Texas Department going with this project?
We should get final clearance in about two weeks.
So it's moved off, I mean, it's moved off somebody's desk?
We had submitted anything that FHWA had requested about two weeks ago, and they'd have 30 days, so should be two weeks and we should be good to go.
Okay. Good. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by a lot of people.
We're anxious.
Seconded by a lot of people.
Talking about this for years.
Commissioner Tamayo and Commissioner Wood, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And I know that, you know, it's got to move because it's stimulus dollars involved, so we don't have a choice there. H, canvassing of precinct election returns for the November 3, 2009 constitutional amendment elections conducted on November the 3 of 2009 in accordance with chapter 67, canvassing elections, section 67.002, comma, canvass of precinct returns for the Texas election code.
Thank you. How are you doing?
What I placed before you is the canvas report for the past November 3 election. And the canvas report, you open your first tab, you have all the precincts listed there and all the propositions with the results for each one of the propositions for and The propositions are listed across the top, and then you come down, every precinct is listed there, you have the first two pages up to proposition nine. And then the last two pages are the last two propositions, 10 and 11. In Cameron County, all the propositions passed. There was, let's see. There was a total of 6,921 voters that went out to vote and opposed for these propositions. Not, not much or not many of them came out to vote. We had just over 4% of the total votes, voters registered in Cameron County that came out to vote in this election. The second tab, which is labeled summary report, is the actual totals for each one of the propositions of all the precincts. And then you have your backup, which is a precinct by precinct report following that.
Any questions on any of? No? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Your canvas.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Otis.
I, consideration and approval of resolution approving the issuance of the City of Far Texas Higher Education Finance Authority Education Revenue Bonds IDEA Public Schools Series 2009 A to finance and refinance the cost of education facilities for IDEA Public Schools located and to be located in Cameron County with respect to a public hearing.
Commissioners, Peggy Christman with Vincent Elkins is here to present the item.
Okay, I, how come, what does with respect to a public hearing mean?
My name is Peggy Christman. I'm with Vincent Elkins, and we are bond counsel to IDEA Public Schools. And this just satisfies an Internal Revenue Code requirement of IDEA issuing tax-exempt bonds. And with respect to a public hearing refers to a public hearing that was held regarding these bonds last Friday.
Okay.
And if you see it's attachment A, the minutes of the public hearing. And all you're doing here today is approving the bonds. You're not obligating the county in any way.
But we don't have any, we're not in charge of a public hearing?
No, I ran this, no. And I also ran this with a bank counselor or financial advisor, and they said everything is in order.
Okay. You recommend, Pete?
Well, I just saw like blank on exhibit B, so I didn't know what it was. Legal recommends this, right?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
J is discussion and possible action regarding the implementation of mandatory direct payroll deposit for all county employees.
So much emphasis on mandatory.
Well, because the calls that are not have been mandatory, you know?
What happens to the people that don't have a checking account?
This item was put on the agenda because we consider to, we continue to consider and review where we can further cut costs and by the same token promote efficiency and where there is some redundancy that is being done to see if it can be eliminated or downsized. Direct deposit was offered to county employees since 2006. Presently, there are approximately about 40%, 40% of the employees that are not taking advantage of direct deposit, and I'm sure that's for a multitude of reasons which they may have. And we have noted that we, when payroll is processed, we're essentially doing the same process twice. We run, we print checks for those that wish to have actual payroll checks printed, and then we have direct deposit, which is done for those individuals that are taking advantage of direct deposit. So presently, this is a procedure that is being done twice for two different groups of employees. And we have associated some costs to that, which you will see is on page two of the information that you received. The cost of the paper stock, that generally runs about $20,000, $20,000 checks per annum, which is about $1,000 per annum based on the checks that are run. But we have costs associated with turnover, and that runs probably about $800. And you'll notice on the sheet that you were given for the cost are listed beside each, beside each item. The bank reconciliation also takes, is cumbersome because we have to use the payroll registers and compare it to the actual checks which have cleared the bank. And that is also a process that could be minimized and done quicker once we, once we would go on a direct deposit. You also have your check pickup, which is done by individual departments. They have to come in from out of town, and they come in, or rather, from out of Brownsville, and they come in from their, from their site, from their location, and they physically come in and pick up the payroll checks at the treasurer's office. You also have sorting of checks. The checks are sorted, the checks are printed, and they're manually sorted and put in individual departmental envelopes, which are picked up by the, by the individual departments. This process probably takes about two hours, give or take, on a, on a regular two-week basis. The printing time, we have two individuals that are tied up when the actual payroll checks are being run. And we have one individual from our payroll department that will go down to the treasurer's office to print checks. And then there is also a treasurer's office employee who is there standing, you know, alongside at the same time. And while this, they only take about 20 to 30 minutes, it, sometimes it takes 20, sometimes when there's problems with a printer and the jam, then it can take even longer. So we're actually tying up two, two employees while this process is running. When checks are lost and they need to be reprinted, we, the treasurer's office will have to issue a stop payment, and we have to wait until we get the stop payment, and then we can reissue the checks. So the employee is actually, this in essence creates a hardship for the employee as well. Then we also have a security issue because you have check stubs that are, that are being printed, and those are also being distributed to, to the departments as well with, with their social security information also on it. The cost that we were able to attribute to this, to this process of check printing is approximately about $61, $6200 per annum. So we feel that is a cost that we would be able to minimize or to, or to reduce totally from, from our budget. Presently, when payroll, in order to process payroll, we receive the timing and attendance records from the, from the individual departments. Payroll will review the information, verify it, and then this information is keyed in so that the payroll can actually run. Payroll is then run, processed, and then this information is sent to the treasurer's office. One of our staff members will then go down to the treasurer's office to, to run the actual payroll checks, and this is where you have two employees tied up, one from our office and one from the treasurer's office. The treasurer then will sort the checks and get them ready, and then the following day distributes the payroll for the departments. Our proposal, revised methodology that we think will cut down on time is to, we will receive the timesheets from the departments, verify and process payroll, actually run or process the payroll through direct deposit and forward the data to the banking institution. And then what would be sorted would be the actual check stub, and that, we would probably have to sort that manually for about two, maybe three pay periods. And then after that, that could be sorted in batches by department, and this information would be emailed out to the department head or to the designated by the department head that they so choose. So, and I realize that a lot of employees choose not to open checking accounts. We have spoken to one of the banks, and that's the one that we have the county depository contract with, and that's with BBVA Compass. And while I'm not promoting BBVA Compass, we spoke to them to see what other option was out there that would be available to employees that for some reason choose not to open checking accounts. There is a debit card or a pay source card that could be used for employees that do not wish to receive, that do not want to go on a direct deposit. And what it would be is, it would be like a, it's actually, the information, the person's payroll would get downloaded or inputted into the actual debit card that they have, and then they could go to the bank that they choose or, or to, to a bank that they designate to us. And they would do a one-time withdrawal, non-refuse charge, because it would be a one-time transaction.
Like, sort of like cashing your check, but you got a little?
Yes, right. And they would actually pull all of their, all of their check.
And you've got to go to that particular bank to do that.
I imagine you would if you would, if you're going to pull out your, excuse me, if you're going to pull out your whole paycheck, then in essence what you're doing is you're, you're cashing your check. Okay, so you would go to?
But you've got to go to that bank.
Correct. That is correct. That is correct. But when an employee is cashing a check, they either go to the bank or they go to a vendor and possibly pay a check cashing fee.
Well, they get charged a fee for that.
Right, right.
Wherever they go. Are you through?
This, this type of implementation, the upside of that would be the pay is still immediately available to, to the employee. They're able to draw it out if they so choose at one time, or if they, some of the banks will offer this debit card to where they can use it to make actual purchases. Of course, I'm sure that, you know, they would understand, or we would, they would have to be advised by the bank of their choosing that if they choose to use it as a debit card, these transactions will incur a fee to them based on the merchants, or if that card is accepted by that particular merchant where it's being used. It serves as a security to the employee because they do not have to carry cash with them. They have a debit card. They would, it can serve as a, as a log or as a register for them, that they would be able to get a printout so they could find out where and how they spent their money at, at a given time. And we think it will keep, then we will help them keep track of their expenses, and this will be, they could get their printout information or check their balance via online or, or through calling a toll-free, a toll-free number. This is, direct deposit is something that is implemented, or has been implemented by many, many employers. All of your federal employees are all on direct deposit. The majority of your school districts, quite a few of your counties are on direct deposit as well, and cities are also on, on direct deposit. And this was put on the agenda so that we could get a direction from the court to see if they are in fact interested in, in having us pursue this, and to see what particular type of option we could pursue to direct deposit for those that do not want a checking account, to where they would be able to use a debit card to receive payment and to cut down on cost for, for, for our county as well.
I can see the advantages, and quite frankly, you know, we're all trying to work in our budget. We know that if we had problems this year, we're going to have problems next year, and it would help you. I think you would have some savings. My concern is for those employees that don't make enough money to where they even have a checking account.
That's, that's correct.
By the time, by the time they get their check, I mean, I see it, you know, their wives can't pick up the check, and they go make payments, and it's probably gone by the time, by the end of the day. I don't think that's an exaggeration, quite frankly, with a lot of our employees. But then again, there's things that can, you know, other avenues that they can take, the debit card or, you know, other ways. But I think, I don't know if there's a survey that has been taken as to why, if there's 40% that are having direct deposit, what are the reasons for the others?
40% are not yet.
Are not.
Oh, 40% are not. So, so the majority are, but it'd be interesting to see why those 40% aren't, and I have a feeling that that's the reason. That they don't have enough money to, to open a checking account, but there's other alternatives. But I think that we would have to help our employees in educating them as to what their alternatives are. I don't know what the rest of you have heard or your feelings.
Well, I enjoyed direct deposit.
Well, I enjoy direct deposit, and it's convenient for me, but that's the way I operate. My wife has her own direct deposit, so I don't have to share my money with her. And a lot of our employees and their families, it's not necessarily that way, from the ones I know. To be able to get your check and go cash it and take the cash, and, you know, when Joe or Jim or little nephew or someone, the kids need some money, you give them $20 because you're not going to give them a debit card if you're using a debit card. If you go and cash the debit card, more or less, at the bank, then you've got to go do that, and you might as well go to Valley Federal Credit Union when they drive up and cash it with them. I'm sure that the employees that do not participate, this 40% that don't participate, probably have very valid reasons for not. Maybe some of them don't really understand it, and maybe some of those would participate. Maybe if we were able to help them to understand how it might benefit them, some of them would. But there's still going to be some that I don't think would or want to. And I certainly am not willing to force an employee to participate in something like this. It's our responsibility to give them their money, not to have some bank give them their money, is the way I look at it.
I think that there's a variety of banks that offer, you know, what is it, check-free checking or cash-free checking or free checking in other words, they don't charge you a service fee, okay? And actually, by giving the employees a debit card at the bank of their choosing or at the credit union of their choosing, it's, you're cutting down on the cost of printing your check, and you're giving them their check because they can draw out their whole check, so it's...
If the unit is out here, for example, they know that on a certain day, all they do is go and swipe their card there and get their money?
If they deposit in that unit.
That would be at their choosing.
If they leave work from one of the service centers and live in the county somewhere where there's no bank convenience, there may be a county, you know, a small grocery store around the corner that's convenient for them. There's lots of reasons, I think, that employees don't do it, especially, you know, like Commissioner Tomayo was mentioning, a lot of our employees perhaps need the money that they get, and the cost of cashing a check is not so unbearable to where they don't feel comfortable doing that, as opposed to traveling someplace else to a bank to be able to not be charged a dollar and a half or $2, whatever the fee is.
You know, I tend to agree with Commissioner Tomayo. I think maybe we, before we, I mean, I don't know, can we mandatorily make the employees do this?
The government does.
I think we may be able to cut this 40% down to 25.
If we actually went out to those employees and talked to them and let them tell us why or why not they have or have not signed up for it. Before, I wouldn't be willing to mandate that they sign up.
I think we'd have to, it's worth deciding on some, maybe researching some alternatives for them, and I think we've already done that, and then explaining it to them, but I'm not willing to vote on making it mandatory without some process that we follow so that they'll be prepared for it. Or they will have some information as to, these are the choices that you have if you don't want the direct deposit. I think the debit card is probably...
The easiest.
Is there a charge in that?
There is no charge for your first time withdrawal if you're going to draw your whole, you have a one-time free withdrawal that you can do that you would not be charged for. So in essence, you can go and draw your whole paycheck one time a month, or once every pay period, and that's free of charge. Now, if you're going to use it as a debit card, I'm sure there's costs to be incurred.
When is our, when is our bank contract up?
Two years, two years.
Two years.
Right.
Still two years?
Mm-hmm.
It's a four-year.
Would the court want to pursue making direct deposit for our new hires? I mean, that would be a start at this point.
But then, who are the new hires? There might be, I'm sorry.
We've got a hiring freeze right now.
Yeah, we have a, well, I'd be reluctant to do that because the new hires might be in the same situation that some of the people that I'm aware of. We don't want to put a burden on our employees. That we do not want to do. But I'm for exploring this and seeing what alternatives are out there besides direct deposit to where they will not be penalized.
Maybe you can visit with all the elected officials or managers of departments and get a little feedback from them, or present options, and as you did to us, and then get some feedback from them in regards, in regards to the 40%. The 60% is...
Yeah, exactly. No, we're talking about the 40%. But you know, that's a high percentage.
It is, considering that, and I don't know if it's because it has not been pushed as much as it should have been.
And that's where I think we can probably...
And that might be it.
...cut it a bit by educating the...
Educating some of the employees.
Yeah, maybe it'll go down to 20% once this is...
You educate and you offer the card, as you say, and see how people feel about that.
What the reaction is.
So...
So we're going to come back to report.
We'll acknowledge the report, and come back to us when you can give us more information.
Martha, I do need to say this, that you've done a good job. You try and find new ways of doing things, and I appreciate that, and this is one of them. And by no means am I not appreciative of what you've done in this category, by my comments, but I'm thinking of the employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, to take this one step further, you know, we approved a check register tonight of, how many checks?
A ton.
Yeah, a ton. You know, I don't know how many there were, but there was, it's a very significant number of checks. I mean, if you really want to push the envelope, why should we not, in all these cases, especially when there are redundancy checks that we pay every week, you know, why can't you push to do direct deposit?
On those.
On those checks, and then just follow up with receipts?
We actually aren't.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
She's ahead, she's ahead of the game.
I'll get...
We're working on that too.
Okay.
Second.
What percent of this register is direct deposit?
Of that particular one?
You know, on the average, not the payroll, the check register.
We'd have to get with the vendors, okay, but we are exploring options with our current bank to see how we could set it up to where we would pay them automatically.
Okay, but we're not doing it with the vendors.
No, the vendors, no.
That's what I was talking about.
That's what we're working on, yes.
Okay.
We have had meetings with the bank on that.
Okay. So we're not doing it, we're not doing it yet.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Motion?
We have a motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Of acknowledging the report?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, discussion and possible action on issues related to Dolphin Cove Oyster Bar, request for proposal or the possible development of the site in Isla Blanca Park. Javier?
Yes, sir. About this, Security Service Court, we, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, I put this on the agenda for our park advisory board to consider what to do with Dolphin Cove, whether we should tear down, build RV sites, reconcession, or actually request for proposal or solicit, request for proposals, or what. Now, at the committee, at the board meeting, there was some comments from the audience, and the board had recommended to leave it as is, not to RFP it out, not to build RV sites, just to leave it alone and leave it open to the public. Matter of fact, they wanted us to enhance it and build picnics tables there and stuff like that so that people can go and walk the way along the jetties. The jetties is open, all that's, you know, open to the public. And what we had suggested, what I proposed to the board was this, is that I compared what we were collecting from Dolphin Cove previously, and I compared what we would be collecting if we were to build RV sites. And in the background, I explained that, is how much we'd be collecting, how much we'd spend to build new RV sites there. So I need to get a direction, what are we going to do with that site, whether we RFP it out, or what, if we leave it alone?
Is that 81,000 annually, Javier?
Yes.
Okay. And the 32 would be like a one-time, except for ongoing maintenance?
Correct. The, if we leave it alone, my recommendation would be is maybe open up that structure and make it, you know, sort of a pavilion side area, but just clean everything out.
Pretty raunchy, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, what do you think, Commissioner? You know, I think that I, I would rather see that we build the RV sites there. I mean, we certainly need the revenue, and so that would be prime site, so I would, I would rather go with building the RV sites there.
And that's not much of a permanent impediment, you know, I mean, aside from the road, which you need anyway.
Right. And that's one of the things I explained to the board is that, and to the audience, was the improvements that we're making there, we're going to be able to recover or recoup that cost in a matter of a year. If, in the event that something came up that we wanted to remove them, then we wouldn't be out. You know, it's minimal, minimal area that we would have to impact if we were to go in there and clear it out. And none of that, I mean, we're not going all the way to the jetties, so the public is still has access to that area.
Let me ask you something. Do you know where the, coming away from where Dolphin Cove was, we had some, two areas there where they had picnic tables and whatnot, would that eliminate those, those two areas?
The ones that are closer to the Dolphin Cove?
Uh-huh.
No, matter of fact, we're building those right now, actually, they're already complete. We replaced those five picnic shelters. And we put them on the, on the west side of that road, of that, that feeder road, because if they're closer to the jettie side, what happens is that a lot of times we have storm surges and it eats away on behind that, behind that area, so. But we're not eliminating any of those sites, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion that we designate that area for RV sites.
What's your recommendation?
To approve RV sites.
Will approve it?
Yeah, yeah, if there's a comment to be made.
Honey, why don't you come and use the mic and tell us who you are?
Give us your name, please.
Yes.
We're actually here, we were interested in reopening Dolphin Cove as the restaurant that it was. My parents are Winter Texans, they stay in the park, and it's a local establishment, and it's really a part of the park. And as far as putting in new RV spots, it is going to affect, you know, the people going to the beach right there and the volleyball court that's right there at Dolphin Cove. I mean, it'll have a big impact, there's no way for it not to. And as far as the new picnic tables, I don't see, I mean, I serve, my fiancee and I own a sailing charter business, I mean, I don't see how they wouldn't be able to, or wouldn't tear down the picnic tables to put RV sites there. I just think that, it's beautiful, it should be left the way it is. It's a local establishment, the island's becoming more of a retirement community. I know a lot of the Winter Texans frequent Dolphin Cove, especially the ones that stay in the park. If you want to go eat at Dolphin Cove, the people that do enjoy going there, they have to pay the money to get in the park to begin with. So I'm, that's one way that they're already getting revenue, obviously, you know, they're paying that extra amount to go to that establishment because it's been there for years. It's gorgeous. That was it. Thank you.
I think it's an amenity that we've had there for many, many years. And I know from being out there a few times, the people that have been staying even during the summertime at the RV park is wanting to know when it's going to open, when it's going to open. And I know that the Winter Texans that stay in the RV park also enjoy it, as you're saying. And I think it's something that is a benefit to everyone that's there. And certainly, there are some people who go there from outside the Isla Blanca Park area to, that did pay their toll to get in just to go eat and eat oysters and eat a hamburger and drink a beer, I guess.
Javier, in the condition that the structure is in right now, how much would have to be invested, whether it be by the county or by whoever would come out and try to open up an establishment there?
Well, it's all going to depend on what they want to open. I mean, if it's a restaurant, it's going to take a lot of money because there's no kitchen, they would have to redo the kitchen.
Kitchen, bathroom, facilities.
Yeah, bathroom.
There may be people willing to do that.
Yeah, no, the thing is, is that building was grandfathered when they had it. You know, the people who had it had flood insurance on it. Now, I mean, there's no way that people are going to be able to get flood insurance on that building unless they raise it up about two or three feet, so.
We've actually looked into it, like I said, Mr. Roberts wants to reopen it, and it's about $100,000, but we have the money, so why aren't we allowed to do it? I mean, granted, maybe we won't get flood insurance, but it's, if we're willing to take the risk and reopen it and we have the money to do it, I don't understand why. No.
Well, the only reason why here in this case is that we have a parks advisory committee. The park advisory committee has taken, you know...
Many hours.
Have given us the recommendation, you know. It would be, it would have to be RFP, it wouldn't be like you would, we could say, okay, you go open up over there.
No, I understand.
You know, we would have to have requests, we'd have to go through that process. There's been, there's been a big issue by many different concerned citizens of that area in regards to pretty much any kind of development in Isla Blanca Park.
Right.
Or redevelopment, okay? And I think that's where it's coming from.
Or enhancement.
The park advisory board, though, advises not to do anything with it, not develop RV sites or not open a restaurant.
Just leave it alone.
That's what they're advising, yeah. That's not what, you know, obviously, our parks director is advising, the RV sites.
I mean, either, either way, Commissioner, I mean, either we build RV sites, now, the only thing else we can...
We can generate income.
Right.
But the amenity that a restaurant there provides and the scenic view of sitting there enjoying your food and your drink is worth something.
Right. Yeah. And, you know, a couple of, a couple of factors, you know, the, in development, if we improve it or we RFP it out, they're limited to what they can build or how much they can build up to, so, you know, $100,000 is probably a realistic number to improve that site.
Well, usually when we RFP, we're going to tell you what we want, what we expect, and then you're going to figure out anyone who wants to respond to the RFP, whether or not they can afford to do that, and whether or not they can generate enough income to generate income for the county.
May I ask, what was the average annual income to the county from that site when it was operable?
It's about $22,000.
$22,000. And you come into us with a non-obstructive type of venue that it'll probably bring in quite substantially more revenues?
Four times as much.
Yeah, we need more revenues.
So...
But, you know, we're losing, what we're losing is the ambiance of what you call...
Yeah.
And the people enjoy it, and the people come back year after year to enjoy it.
Commissioner, did you make a motion? Or you just, Commissioner...
Commissioner Aldis made a motion.
Made a motion.
And we approve the recommendation of Javier Mendez and to develop some RV sites at the...
And I'll second that motion.
Okay?
Due to the fact that we need the income.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye voted in the affirmative, three to one. Okay. Item?
M.
M.
Nothing?
Robert Lopez is not here, so we'll just forgive that. I'll entertain a motion for...
I think, I think we had a late... I think, I think we had a late, didn't she, didn't she have something?
What's that?
A public comment, came in late. She came in late and handed it in to her. I've got to go. I have a handsome man over there sitting waiting.
Letitia Garcia?
My name is Letitia Perez Garcia and if Judge Cuskas could be here, I'd like to say and to thank him because he has an open door policy to his office and due to his open door policy, I was able to visit the Rep. Carrizales jail in Oromito and observe several things that are of concern as I was there. I had been concerned about the overtime at the jail system to the two to three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the past budget year. On, on October the twenty-eighth, I visited this complex and toured the facility for about three hours. I was made aware of various problems that exist within the complex. Some of the issues that were shared by the officers there are the following. First of all, the facilities are very crowded. The ratio between the detainee and the officer is very high, forty-eight to one. Other jails probably have fifteen to one or a little bit more elevated. We have forty-eight to one. That's a very dangerous number. Number two, I saw only one officer who had a gun. All of the other officers, which were veterans at the, at the system, only carry pepper spray. There's over eight hundred detainees within that jail. That makes it very dangerous for these officers. Only one carries a gun. The other thing that concerned me was the salaries. My goodness, these are ridiculous, okay? A twenty-nine-year-old veteran within the system of, let's call it law enforcement, makes twenty-eight thousand to twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. The comparison to this is that a new magistrate's court was developed within the jail. The new magistrate's court, the magistrate is there and the new clerk that has just signed on as a new hire is making twenty-nine thousand, an eighteen-year-old person, making what a twenty-nine-year-old veteran is making at that facility. That is of concern. That's laughable, truly laughable. The new hires, they're, they're hiring eighteen-year-olds off the street, okay? They train at the facility and they immediately are entitled to benefits. Usually you have to be at a job at least three months before you get benefits. Right off the street, an eighteen-year-old gets a benefit package, two weeks of vacation. Wow. Vacation pay, workers' comp, benefits, sick leave and so forth. The salary for these eighteen-year-olds is usually from nine to eleven dollars an hour. Upon completing their training, they usually quit after training there. The cost of the training and the benefit package offered, offered these eighteen-year-olds is to the county about three thousand dollars. Three thousand dollars. They usually quit and decide to seek employment in Hidalgo County where they are paid much, much more and is a salary substantially higher than Cameron County. Like I said, the training and the benefits are about three thousand dollars. Another thing within this commission, there's grant money out there and there is grants granted to this, this facility, but the problem is it doesn't get used for what it's intended for, okay? There's budget amendment here and a budget amendment over here and let's take from here and let's, let's use the money where the grants are supposed to be used. If it belongs to the jail, hands off. It belongs to the immigrants that are coming in. You have a grant of over five hundred thousand dollars that is coming in and there's already projected eyes looking into how do we spend this money? It belongs to the jail, so please use it adequately and properly. As a rule of thumb on paydays, many of the workers call in sick. It's Friday, time to call in sick. Let's just call in sick and they are usually the same ones all the time, the same ones. These slots have to be covered by somebody. Officers are called at home and they have to provide the, they, they have to provide a body to come and take care of that slot. Who's in charge is my question? Who is in charge? Who's taking charge? Apparently nobody because the people themselves have to provide the slots to get taken care of and there goes your overtime. Hello? This is our problem, we're talking overtime. Not very good. One officer has a family of six, including himself, and states that he shops at the thrift store. How sad. He shops at the thrift store, four, his four children, himself and his wife. Approximately four officers who carry the major part of the jail facilities will be retiring without hesitation and ready to go. You have nobody to fill the spots. Eighteen-year-olds are getting trained and they're doing their thing and they're, they're walking off with benefit packages and they're on to Hidalgo County. Who's going to take these veterans' positions? Who's going to want to go and take care of these positions with the kind of salaries? My question and another thing is the, the ventilation in there. It's a, it's a fire hazard. It's, you can hear the clanking of the, the air conditioners as, I don't know how old they are, but they don't sound very equitable. So, so what's going to happen with these forty-eight to one, the over eight hundred detainees that are there in case of a fire or the, the air conditioning runs down? You're going to have fatalities, asthma attacks, heart, heart attacks, lung failure? I don't know how old this building is, but it, it seems like it's having problems. You need better ventilation.
We've been very generous with our time. Normally we do a three-minute time limit. You've been talking to us for well over seven minutes.
I'm sorry, I apologize, but I had...
I appreciate your passion for the issues that are there. Unfortunately or unfortunately, you know, the, the jail system is controlled and operated by the sheriff, an elected official, just like we are. We do provide a budget for them, but the conditions of the jail are all monitored by the Texas Commission of Jail Standards, which is an organization that frequently visits us to make sure that, you know, we are doing what is supposed to be done and when we're not, they, they give us orders as to what needs to be fixed. Those are through the sheriff's office again because he is the one responsible, but...
May I conclude? This includes the sheriff and then I'll conclude. If, if you can give me the...
Okay, this is very short because it's...
Yeah, I have just, I was going to ask for the, I'm sorry.
I said, because it's...
It's late, yes.
Well, it's, it's going over. If we do, if we allow you seven minutes or ten minutes, then we really need to allow everybody that when they come from...
The same amount, so...
Okay. So you'll allow me?
If you conclude quickly.
Okay, thank you. We, the citizens, don't need a sheriff with a four-year degree who is not productive. We need a commission who will hold the responsible parties accountable for these conditions. We need some common sense, a common sense sheriff who is really interested in making a difference in this community. This community demands accountability on these issues ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I hear a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.